Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. I ask that the guests and visitors retire behind the rail. The members will take their seats. We will get started today. Before we start, I'd ask if anyone has a cellphone or any other electronic device that makes noise, I'd ask that you please turn it off or turn it on silent. Thank you very much for your cooperation. To give our invitation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Omari Hughes of the Church of the Redeemer Baptist. He is here today as the guest of Councilman Johnson. I would ask all members and guests to please rise. Folks, can I ask you quiet, please? Thank you.
Good morning. Let me first start by simply congratulating all those -- I know we recently had an election, and I would be remiss without congratulating our Councilman, Kenyatta Johnson, and thanking him for the invitation to be here on today. Knowing that there -- knowing that this is a season of transition, I wanted to read just a few very short verses and then just do a quick prayer. Ecclesiastes, Chapter 3, says, "There is a time for everything and a season for every activity under the heavens. A time to be born and a time to die; a time to plant and a time to uproot; a time to kill and a time to heal; a time to tear down and a time to build; a time to weep and a time to laugh; a time to mourn and a time to dance; a time to scatter stones and a time to gather them; a time to embrace and a time to refrain from embracing; a time to search and a time to give up; a time to keep and a time to throw away; a time to tear and a time to mend; a time to be silent and a time to speak; a time to love and a time to hate; a time for war and a time for peace." Let us pray. Lord God, you alone control and know the seasons of our lives. You have destiny that you've placed on all of us, and you've appointed far before the foundations of the world that this is our time to be here. While you've gathered us in this place and in these seasons, we pray that you would use us mightily. We don't know everything about the times that you've called us to, but there are some things we do know. We do know that this is still a time to take up the cause of the poor, not just the middle class. We do know that this is a time to ensure that people who have had a place in their communities for generations are not pushed out by tax hikes and gentrification. We do know that this is a time to ensure that all of our schools are not just public but equal. We do know that this is a time to ensure that funding is not simply provided to those who are lighter than others, but those who are black and brown and tan as well. We do know that this is a time for us to use our elected power to stop bullets from flying through our streets. We do know that this is not a time for us to ignore what's happening in a neighborhood that's down the street because ours is flourishing. We know that this is a time to remember that projects still exist. We know that this is a time to remember that children still need parents. And we know that this is still a time where people are targeted disproportionately because of their race or ethnicity. And so, as you gather us in this place, we pray that you will give us the strength throughout these times to ensure that you're represented in all of our districts and in all of our lives and throughout this city and this nation and even this world. For this time, we'll be careful to give you glory on and praise, for we love you, God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend, for those inspiring words. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 14, 2015, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 14, 2015, be approved.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded. At the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, May 14, 2015, stand and approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is requests for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the majority, Mark Squiller, Councilman, has requested a leave of absence today.
Thank you. Leave shall be granted, and Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business, and I would like to welcome and thank everyone who has come down today to witness their government in action. We really hope that you enjoy yourself today, that you leave here with a little bit of knowledge with respects to how we operate here. So again, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you again very soon. Thank you. At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen, who presented a resolution recognizing Gene Blackman, and we all know Gene. With Mr. Blackman and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Nielsen, we have Councilman Heenan.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You're quite right, Mr. President. We all do know Gene. We know Gene and his role down here at Council and Harrisburg, walking the halls of the Senate, the House of Representatives, and doing a wonderful job for those who protect us daily, night, morning, no time of day, matters, and put their lives in a line, our Philadelphia police. Gene has represented us on many issues in Harrisburg, whether it's school funding last year, trying to get our kids educated. You'd be surprised of all the things he has his hands in. So today, we'd like to honor him. We talked about it before our little break, and we wanted to do it properly. So I'm joined by Councilman Heenan. The Council of the City of Philadelphia is pleased and proud to join the Philadelphia Police Department in honoring Eugene Blackman on his occasion of his retirement. Whereas Eugene Blackman is a graduate of West Philadelphia High School, he began his career with the Philadelphia Police Department on November 8, 1971, as a police officer. He worked for the department for 17 years. And whereas...
Whereas, Mr. Blackman has worked for the FOP since retiring from the Philadelphia Police Department, where he first served as Chief of Staff at FOP Lodge 5. He currently holds a position of lobbyist, where he is responsible for handling labor, interviews, and grievance procedures for Lodge Number 5, the position from which he is now retiring from. And whereas Eugene Blackman has gone far, far beyond the call of duty to perform his duties in an exemplary manner, facing the stresses and dangers of his job with determination and dignity for the citizens of Philadelphia. He has brought pride to the Philadelphia Police Department, distinction to his badge, and has established a record that goes beyond competence. And whereas Eugene Blackman has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow officers, peers, and supervisors, and has exemplified the Philadelphia Police Department's motto of honor, integrity, and service.
Therefore, by the virtue of this citation, the City of Philadelphia City Council proudly present it to Eugene Blackman with this citation, evidencing the respect, admiration, appreciation of this legislative body. We thank him for the many years of dedicated service and wish him well in his retirement, filled with good health, happiness, and the joys of family and friends. The city will surely miss this fine public service. Servant, congratulations, Gene.
Chair recognizes Mr. Blackman for remarks.
(Laughter). Thanks, sir. I begged them not to do this. Begged them. I just want to thank everybody in City Council, current and past City Council members. It's always been a pleasure to come down here, and if you've been to Harrisburg, you know that it's a real pleasure to come down here. And I just want to thank everybody for making my job in City Council very easy, very relaxed, and it's always been an honor and a pleasure to come down here. I just want to thank all of you for making my life a lot better. Thank you.
Counsel will be at ease. Thank you very much. The next order of business is communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the Thank you, Mr. Decker. Will you please read those messages?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4, 604, and 2, 307 of the Home Road Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 150355, 150367, 150370, 150371, 150375, 150376, 150377, 150379, 150406, and 150415. And I am pleased to advise you that on May 20, 2015, I signed all the bills which were passed by Council at its session on May 7, 2015. And I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body, a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the model city's urban renewal area identified by house number and street address as 2310 through 14 North Marshall Street. And a resolution confirming the appointment of Barbara Adams as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2020. And an ordinance constituting the 14th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue refunding bonds of the City of Philadelphia. And an ordinance authorizing the Commerce Director and the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire an approximately 27-acre property known as International Plaza located at South Route 291 and Tancom Island Road, Tancom Township, Delaware County, together with all improvements there on, and to enter into a master lease with Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development pursuant to which the city will lease the property. And an ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the Sinking Fund Commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with the issuance of the bonds and certain other actions. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer to enter into an amendment agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of development assistance to support certain costs related to promoting economic and commercial development of the city. And an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Property to acquire an easement in the area bounded by Market Street, 11th Street, Chestnut Street, and 12th Street, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional communications?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will now have the introductions of bills and resolutions, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today, I have one bill, one non-privileged resolution, and one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing Drexel University to construct and maintain step and planter encroachments at 3175 JFK Boulevard.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution calling for the School District of Philadelphia to mandate cursive writing in the Philadelphia School District curriculum.
That resolution will be on next week's final passes calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration to its conveying conditional fees, simple titled, sitting on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on, situated in the 27th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will also be on next week's final passes calendar. The Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On your behalf, I offer five bills.
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance to amend Section 14802, Subparagraph 3 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Required Parking in Commercial Districts by changing the parking requirements for certain lots designated CMX3. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 58 by striking from the City Plan of Vacating Mellon Street from Park Avenue to Ridge Avenue. And an ordinance establishing a one-way regulation on Mellon Street from 13th Street to Park Avenue westbound. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Chapter 14800 entitled Parking and Loading by amending Section 14806 and titled Off-Street Loading by providing certain exceptions to the maximum curd cut width. And an ordinance amending Section 9206 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors and Neighborhood Business Districts by creating the Temple University District.
Those five bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. I offer two bills on behalf of myself and six bills on behalf of Councilman Squill.
And ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning to provide for notice to be given to the Director of Commerce in connection with certain zoning and planning applications for permits, approvals, and variances. And an ordinance amending Section 3207 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sale of Fuel Oil by modifying certain requirements for commercial fuel oil content. And an ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Property to acquire, on behalf of the city, an easement in the area bounded by Market Street, 11th Street, Chestnut Street, and 12th Street. And an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by providing for balconies, revising the requirements for roof decks, adding definitions, and making related changes. And an ordinance amending Section 9213 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Farmers Markets by amending and further clarifying the definition section. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan Number 238 by striking from the City Plan of Vacating the southerly two-feet-wide portion of Washington Avenue from Front Street to Alter Street. And an ordinance amending Section 14200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Definitions and Section 14500 entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by adding a new subsection entitled East Callahill Overlay District and amending Chapter 14702 entitled Floor Area and Height Bonuses by adding a new subsection entitled Stormwater Open Space. And an ordinance authorizing Philadelphia Parking Authority to construct and maintain various right-of-way encroachments within the public right-of-way on Art Street, Philbert Street, and H Street.
Those eight bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Tasko.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two bills on your behalf, and I have four bills.
And ordinance authorizing the Bond Committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the Sinking Fund Commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds. And an ordinance authorizing and approving the execution and delivery of a service agreement between the city and the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development relating to the provision by the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development of development assistance to support certain costs related to promoting economic and commercial development of the city. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Newtown Avenue, Godfrey Avenue, Allen Grove Street, Tabor Avenue, Falkrod Street, and Adams Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer, on behalf of the city, to enter into an amendment agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for provision of payroll banking services to the city. And an ordinance constituting the 14th supplemental ordinance to the amended and restated general airport revenue bond ordinance authorizing the mayor, the city controller, and the city solicitor, or a majority of them, to issue and sell one or more series of tax-exempt or taxable airport revenue refunding bonds. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designation of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Distant Street, Whittaker Avenue, Brighton Street, Penway Street, St. Vincent Street, and Algon Avenue.
Those six bills will be referred to the appropriate committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Councilman, Council President Clark, I have three bills, one resolution?
Thank you, Councilman.
And ordinance authorizing Samuel J.R. Sherman of the Passianke Avenue Revitalization Corporation to construct and maintain various planter encroachments on Broad Street, McKean Street, 15th Street, Snyder Avenue, and Passianke Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing the Commerce Director and the Commissioner of Public Property, on behalf of the city, to acquire an approximately 27-acre property known as International Plaza located on Route 291 and Tancom Island Road, Tancom Township, Delaware County, together with all improvements there on, and to enter into a master lease with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development. And an ordinance authorizing John Duffy to construct and maintain a bay-window encroachment at 215 South Bonsall Street.
Those three bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution confirming the reappointment of Barbara Adams as a member of the Board of the Philadelphia Energy Authority to serve in the term ending January 1, 2020.
And that will be on next week's final passes calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land within an area bounded by Arizona Street, Emerald Street, York Street, and Coral Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I have one privileged resolution.
A privileged resolution regreasing May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Philadelphia and honoring the leadership, commitment, and advocacy of Joan Ernie and Eddie Mannion in service to individuals living with behavioral health conditions and their families.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passes calendar. Councilman Johnson, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Just want to acknowledge representatives, young people who are here watching us do our work, advocating for education with my -- they gave me a nice toolbox. As we advocate for making sure, as we always do in City Council, each budget cycle, funding for our schools to open on time with resources, so under the leadership of Donna Cooper and PCCY, just want to acknowledge M.A.S.T.R.E.D. charter Shoemaker at the behest of Councilman Curtis Jones, U.S. Philly, and Chester Arthur from the Second Councilman district. Can all the young people please stand up to acknowledge? And that's at the behest of Philadelphia Children, Citizens for Children and Youth. Let's get them a round of applause. God bless. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, I see on my sheet here, Dobbins Technical High School from the Fifth Council District. They're not here? All right. Maybe next week. Next week? There you go. All right, all right. Get that plaque for the fifth. All right. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Good?
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. No bills or resolutions today. I would like to introduce principals after this segment of our proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. Four bills.
And ordinance authorizing the installation of all-way stop signs at the intersection of Eva Street and Port Royal Avenue. And an ordinance authorizing Jason Cohen to construct and maintain a banner pole encroachment at 4165 Ridge Avenue. And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Haggy's Mill Road, Port Royal Avenue, Lair Street, Southern Avenue, Eva Street, Shawmont Avenue, Umbria Street, Railroad Right-of-Way, and the county line. And an ordinance authorizing Richard Barnhart to construct and maintain a banner pole encroachment at 4341 Ridge Avenue.
Those four bills will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. Offer two bills.
And ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Priscilla Street, West Colton Street, Midville Avenue, Wissa Hicken Avenue, and West Queen Lane to Priscilla Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Hunting Park Avenue, Pacific Street, 22nd Street, Van Nuys Street, and Wissa Hicken Avenue.
Referred to committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you very much, Councilman. That concludes our introductions of bills and resolutions. We will now hear our reports from committee, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez for a report from the Committee on License and Inspection.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Licenses and Inspections reports one bill out with a favorable recommendation. Three bills, actually.
Mr. Decker, please read the report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Licenses and Inspections, to which is referred Bill Number 150266, entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 9, 3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability by adding definitions of providing for the transition from housing inspection licenses to rental licenses in 2015, and amending Subcode F of Title 4 and title of the Philadelphia File Code to remove the exception to payment of the high-rise Philadelphia File Code to remove the exception to payment of the high-rise inspection fee for certain occupancies. And Bill Number 150275 entitled an ordinance amending Subcode A of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Administrative Code by amending Chapter 3 entitled "Permits", amending Chapter 6 entitled "Fines," and amending Chapter 9 entitled "Fees." And Bill Number 150276 entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 10700 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Refuse and Littering" by amending Section 10701 entitled "Definitions," amending the definition of debris, and by amending Section 10710 entitled "Dumping of Debris and Short Dumping" by providing that debris generated from construction activity be placed in construction dumpsters, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectfully reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. The chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended as to permit first reading this day of bills' numbers 150266, 150275, 150276, I'm sorry.
Thank you. It has been moved appropriately second that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this days of bills number 150266, 150275, and 150276. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. These bills will be placed on our first reading calendar today. The next order of business is a consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on our first reading calendar today, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar today.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up from second reading and final passes calendars today. Numbers 150476, 150477, 150479, 150354, 150233, 150367, 150371, and 150415. All of the resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you very much, Councilmen. Before considering these bills and resolutions on the final passes calendar, we will have our public comment session. It will go as follows. If you have not already signed up and you wish to testify on a bill, I'd ask that you sign up at the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the middle of the council chambers. There's a podium. The device on the podium, there's a light. When that light turns green, it is your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. Thank you all very much. You will be given three minutes to testify on the bill or resolution. Mr. Decker called the first name.
Fay Anderson, commenting on 150406.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Fay Anderson. I'm a lifelong activist and public policy consultant. Today, I'm speaking in my capacity as a citizen journalist who uses open data to promote accountability and transparency. I'm here to express my outrage that city council would consider authorizing the commissioner of public property to spend a dime, let alone up to $7.2 million, to purchase land on which to build a new prison, a prison that would cost between $300 million and $500 million, a prison that is opposed by the next mayor, Jim Kenny. On Tuesday, the Philadelphia Planning Commission voted to disapprove Bill Number 150406, better known as the School-to-Prison Pipeline Bill. The commissioners rejected the staff recommendation to move forward with the land purchase. It was reported they questioned whether a prison was the best use of waterfront property. My question is, what are you thinking? The school district has an $85 million deficit, and council is considering a bill that would give millions of taxpayers money to a shadowy Delaware corporation with the New York City mailing address and no presence in Philadelphia. Why waste millions of dollars to acquire land that will remain vacant? Philadelphia is experiencing a construction boom, but the property at 777 State Road is a bust. The property has been entangled in a web of lawsuits dating back to 2007. Indeed, 7777 Philadelphia Loan Associates got control of the 58 acres in a closed-market sale after the previous owner defaulted on the loan. Without a land use plan, our tax dollars would be wasted paying off a private lender's bad loan. Through open data and right-to-know requests, we will eventually uncover the identities of those behind the land deal, their relationships, and campaign contributions. But this is what we know right now. Bill Number 150406 is a raw deal for the citizens of Philadelphia. Poll after poll shows education is the most important issue for your constituents. The message that this bill sends to these kids here that the council places a higher priority on laying the groundwork for the school-to-prison pipeline than building a brighter future for children trapped in 100-year-old school buildings without librarians, guidance counselors, nurses, or air conditioning. Our children are being set up for failure. The voters spoke on Tuesday. They want a different direction for the city and city council. They want education, not incarceration. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Peter McDermott, commenting on 150406.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council President and esteemed members of the city council. I'm here to talk today about Bill 150406, which is listed as 58 acres. This is located in the Holmesburg section of Philadelphia, 19136. Since 1874, the Holmesburg section of this city has dealt with correctional facilities. The House of Corrections was built in 1874, demolished in 1925, and rebuilt again in 1927. Holmesburg Prison, 8125 Tarso Avenue, was built in 1896, still there. The Detention Center, 8201 State Road, 1963, 52 years later, still there. Philadelphia Industrial Correctional Center, 8301 State Road, 1986, still there. CFCC, Karen Fromhole Correctional Facility, named for two officers that were killed in the riots at Holmesburg Prison, 1995, still there. Riverside Correctional Facility, female population, 8151 State Road, 2004, still there. This property is very valuable. It's located along the Delaware River. It's approximately 450 feet from the shipping channel, a shipping channel which has been deepened to 45-foot. It has opened up additional avenues for commerce along that river. While I fully trust Councilman Heenan and his assessment of the prisons that he went into, he called the conditions deplorable. I'm a friend of Bobby Heenan. I would consider him a friend. I would concur with him. If he says it's deplorable, I would say it's deplorable. These prisoners shouldn't have to live in conditions like that, and our correctional officers shouldn't have to deal with that as well. Do we need a new prison? I'm not the person to assess that. That's for experts. What I do know is, we do not need it on the waterfront. It can be built somewhere else. It can provide union jobs. It can provide correctional facilities somewhere else. This facility could be used as an additional use. Doesn't have to be a shipping terminal. Doesn't have to be industrial. Could be a park. Whatever the case may be, if the prison needs to get built, I fully understand that. If Camden can realize, after 20 years, that the riverfront is not a place for a prison, Philadelphia, which is arguably one of the greatest cities on the eastern seaboard, I think we're better than they are.
Thank you for your testimony.
Molly Mitchell, commenting on 150233.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Thank you for putting this bill forward for a vote today. As you know, a library needs more than a lease to keep its doors open, and because of lack of funding, most of the elementary schools in Philadelphia do not have functioning libraries. My daughter goes to school at Southwark, and while they have a beautiful library, it's really just an unused room, not available for students, for student use, because there's no staff to keep it in order as students in searching for and checking out books and furthering their education and appreciation for reading and literacy. Just yesterday, the mayor was at Southwark, making a stop there on his innovative and effective schools tour. While Southwark is thriving in many, many, many ways, our lack of a fully funded budget puts our ability to be truly effective and innovative in serious jeopardy. Please approve the $105 million requested by the district so our schools and administrators can plan for the next school year. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Andre Williams, commenting on 150233.
Morning. Good morning to the members of the city council. My name is Andre Williams. I'm here today to talk to you about, about, excuse me. I'm a YesPhilly student. We need school nurses, books, libraries, better technology, and more athletic programs. A few years ago, I was a Jersey Mass mom, and I was expelled for fighting. A couple months later, I was arrested for selling drugs and strong-arm robbery. I was sent to a youth detention center for two years, but my mindset really didn't change. One day, my brother came home from YesPhilly and told me that I was nothing without my diploma or GED. Something clicked in my head, and I decided to enroll in YesPhilly. I worked hard in every class. I joined several extracurricular activities. Today, I'm a straight-A student, and I have even learned how to tie a tie. I am set to graduate November 18th. Being locked up did not change me. Education and school did. So please provide more funding for schools like YesPhilly. You could save a life. It saved mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Taylor Frome, commenting on 150233.
Good morning. I have my toolbox, and I know all members of the city council also have their toolboxes, which were given out by students from the YesPhiladelphia Public School System this morning. My name is Taylor Frome, and I'm here as the Executive Director of YesPhilly. YesPhilly is a community-based organization right in North Philadelphia and next door to the former William Penn High School. YesPhilly serves students who have dropped out of Philadelphia's public schools, students who have worked hard to get back on track, students like Andre, who are finishing their high school education and turning their lives around. We have an enriched model that engages students in media arts and technology and helps them develop new behaviors that they'll need to be successful adults, as they earn credits for their high school diploma. Libraries in their communities are also a key part of a process for change in terms of changing their lives. I'm here to ask you to provide funding for the Philadelphia School District to fund their request for $105 million for this year so that all students in Philadelphia can attend better-resourced schools. I know that city council has come through for Philadelphia students in the past, and we're counting on you again in terms of filling the school district's request for $105 million in new and recurring revenue. Philadelphia is one of the most underfunded school districts in the nation. We spend less per student than all but two other cities. For the first time in four years, the governor has proposed an increase in funding for public education. We will continue to make sure that our state legislators increase funding and pass a formula, but that does not relieve city council of its duties. The sooner a budget is passed, the better off our schools will be. With less than one month until the last day of school, time is of the essence. Passing a budget will allow us to focus on teaching and learning and not budget advocacy. I also want to ask you to commit to supporting YesPhilly and to come and visit us at our site next to the old William Penn High School sometime soon. Yesterday's news boasted that on-time high school graduation rates have increased from 52% to 65% over the last eight years. All of us can do the math. Even at the current improved level, at best, 35% of high school students are succeeding. In North Philadelphia neighborhoods, that rate goes up to over 50%. Even the district's safety net system for that students, the accelerated high schools, is underfunded and needs resources for additional staff and basic 21st century equipment. Investing in our schools is a smart investment for Philadelphia. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Arnold Jones, commenting on 150406.
Morning. Good morning. I would first like to thank Ms. Fay Anderson for her eloquent synopsis of Bill 150406. That information is something that a lot of us are not made privy to, nor can we articulate it as well as she has. I'd like to just say, basically, there seems to be a problem here in reference to this proposed bill. First of all, I'm deeply concerned with the fact that there are no tangible solutions to the educational deficit issue, although there are several grandiose ideas about reinvesting in prisons. Ask yourself this question. If you, those of you that work on city council, are working in reference to your constituents' needs, then how can you consciously and morally decide to allocate funds towards prison construction and constructing a, instead of constructing, a secure future for your constituents' children and your children that are served by the tax dollars of the constituency? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Shapif Elmecchi, commenting on 150406.
Morning. Good morning. Thank you. And I just want to remind city council that we are at a critical juncture. We appreciate all of the support that you've given to the district and especially Dr. Height in realizing his vision for Philadelphia. As you know, we've had several superintendents over the past 10 years. We are, we believe we are in a direct line to achieving greater heights and more success. In front of you, that you received are the toolboxes with suggestions from the citizens of your city to how to increase the funding that Dr. Height has asked for. He's asked for $105 million, recurring, sustainable funding to ensure that our students are successful and that the future of the city is vibrant and successful as well. We ask that the Education Committee of City Council scours the nation and finds all the different ways that cities are providing revenues to ensure that the schools, districts, and their cities are successful. We're asking the city council to act big. We're asking city council to be agile in their pursuit of this funding. In this toolbox, there are many suggestions. All of them will amount to funding that can occur on a yearly basis. And we want you to know wholeheartedly that the city is behind Dr. Height's request. The city acknowledges and supports your previous support of our school district, and we are asking that you set up a system where we do not come hat in hand, year-to-year basis. And lastly, we want our city council members to know that we hope that you will be stubborn and open-minded. Stubborn in your commitment to the future of the city, stubborn in your commitment to make sure that these students are successful, that next year's graduates, as well as next year's pre-K and kindergarten students, are set up for success, and open-minded at the same time, and looking for every venue, every opportunity, every single way that cities have been innovative, that our city can be innovative, and that we put the success of our students and the future of this city in the forefront of all our decisions. We trust that you will do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Milton Martalak, commenting on 150406.
Morning. Morning, city council. Good morning, everyone. I'd like just to make a comment. I think it's about time, instead of building prisons, it's time to start building opportunity for younger children and everybody in any community. I think coming home at night and looking at a prison is not a positive mindset, but when you come home and you have opportunity for the kids and adults and the same, would be more of a way to go than spending millions of dollars on prisons. And how about building a sports complex or a ball field or something like that? So if you, city council, if you can bear that in mind, I don't think you'd like to come home to have a prison sitting outside your home or in your community. Let's start building opportunity, not prisons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commenting on 150406.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Megan Brown from Mastery Charter Shoemaker Campus. I am honored to be standing here before you today to advocate for funding for the school district of Philadelphia. I plead to city council to take a chance on the youth of Philadelphia and fund our futures. The money, though may seem like a lot, is minimal when you think of the lives you are impacting. Children who will never get to live in suburban communities should not be limited due to their circumstances. You, you, and you are standing in between us and our future. Please invest in us because we are worth it. One day, I may be sitting in your seats, and I would, and I would hope to assist those that would one day leave me. And on the topic of the prison pipeline, I would hope that we are more valuable than future inmates. As Malcolm X said, "Education is our passport to the future." Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to our calendar. And before we do that, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I thank you, Mr. President. I would like to salute principals that are joining us today. We know where you have strong schools, you also have exceedingly strong principals. And we want to salute Tony Damon of the Dobbin, Principal of Dobbins in your district, Sharif If you would please remain standing. Sharif El-Mekki of Mastery Shoemaker, Kim Newman of Chester Arthur, and Taylor Frome Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 150476.
A resolution also naming Civic Center Boulevard to Raymond G. Pearlman Way.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved properly second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution 150476 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150477.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled to so city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 3rd, 6th, 44th, 51st, and 60th wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150477 is adopted. Mr. Decker, 150479.
A resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Ds conveying conditional fees simple titled to so city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 1st and 31st wards of the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass for a motion for the adoption for Councilman Swillis' bill.
I make a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and 150479 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 150354.
An ordinance amending Chapter 12, 1,000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parking Meter Regulations and Penalties to specify the fee for parking meter payments made through mobile payment systems.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in the affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title, 150233.
An ordinance authorizing the director of the Free Library of Philadelphia and the Commissioner of Public Property to execute a sublease or other agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development, subject to a master lease between paid and road and market partners, under which the city would occupy space in the building located at 2,000 Hamilton Street.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150367.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel of land bounded by West Vanango Street, Germantown Avenue, West Tioga Street, and North Watch Street for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150371.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel or parcels of land and any improvements there on located at 2459 through 77 Kensington Avenue for further conveyance.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 150415.
An ordinance authorizing the Department of Public Property to acquire on an approximately .80 acre property consisting of a portion of the elevated rail line known as the Viaduct located between North Broad Street, the north side of Noble Street, 11th Street, and the south side of Callahill Street, together with all improvements there on and associated easements, and to lease a portion of the property to the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Good, Councilman Greenlee, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman Nielsen, Councilman O'Brien, Councilman O'Neill, Councilman O., Councilwoman Conan Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilwoman Tascow, Council President Clark.
Aye, ayes are 15, and ayes are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution recognizing May 2015 as Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia and honoring the leadership, commitment, and advocacy of Joan Ernie and Eddie Mannion in service to individuals living with behavioral health conditions and their families. Introduced by Councilman O'Brien.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved and probably second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on a final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We will now ask if there are any speeches on the part of the minority. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I just wanted to say that this is a difficult job that we have. We always serve at the pleasure of the voters. I think we serve at the pleasure of the Lord. I mean, personally, we serve as long as he wants us to serve. But we have two members. I want to recognize Councilman Wilson Good Jr. He and I sometimes disagree, but I always respect and appreciate his advocacy. He's been a champion, and he's left a legacy here, and I'm sure he will continue to do good work as the Lord directs him. And I've had the pleasure of working with Councilman Ed Nielsen. He's been here a short time, but I'll say one of the hardest-working councilmen and his staff. I'm sorry to see them go, because I think just the work that they've done representing the folks here in Philadelphia has been excellent. And of course, he's here till December, and I'm sure a bright path will open for him as well. So I'd like to thank them both for their service and their families for putting up with this thing that we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the majority, the chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to publicly thank my colleague, Councilman Heenan, for holding Bill Number 150406. In fact, as we see, many people have come out today in reference to this. It is not left by chance that we are beginning to discuss the part of the budget that deals with public education with a $105 million request on the table. I want to tell you that we clearly know in this business that one budget is not the same as the other budget, capital versus operating, real clear. But the signal it sends to a lot of young people is that the pipeline to prison is open and running well. We should not send that signal. When we have alternatives to spend that, closing in on $200 million capital expenditure. My alma mater, Overbrook High School, was built in 1924. Two of the floors are closed because it can't come up with the capital dollars to fix it. Mastery Charter School, GRAS, built in 1925. The Howe School in Fern Rock, 1914, celebrating its 101th anniversary. Taylor School in Hunting Park, 1908. Harding School in Frankfurt, 1925. The Kendrick Rec Center in my district, which is a capital expenditure by the city of Philadelphia, We need to take a hard look at how we determine our priorities. Budgeting is governing with limited resources and making tough choices, and this is a choice that is easy for us to take a look at. These schools that we can rebuild create jobs in the trades, jobs in the new schools that they house. We can find better ways to spend that $8 million. Newly nominated Judge Dougherty talked about investing $1.1 million to put GPS systems on non-threatening inmates, so that they can be in-house arrests that could save hundreds of thousands of dollars a year to go towards more education. As we look at this and make these choices over the next 30 days, I'd hope that you and our colleagues would keep that in mind as we determine the priorities for the city of Philadelphia for the next fiscal year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council. Chair recognizes Councilman Good.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tuesday was election day. I lost a race for the first time in 24 years when I first ran for city council at the age of 25. So now I'm 8 for 10, and I'm good with that. All is well with my soul. I was never in it for the politics. I was raised better than that. It was simply a means to an end. I've served for four terms on this council, have introduced 140 bills that have become law, and most have focused on creating new opportunity economic justice, fair lending, community reinvestment, tax credits for investment and job creation, and CDC economic development, new opportunities for businesses owned by women and people of color, and a living wage standard that I've raised from $5.15 to $7.72 to $10.88 to $12 per hour. All that earned me tons of endorsements, but not renomination, because Tuesday was purely about politics. Now I've used politics enough to win four terms that allowed me to do that work for economic justice. So I've made that mark in the time that I've been here. It's not enough to just win, you should do something. And I've done a lot so politics has served its purpose for me. As for my future, the next thing is coming, this summer I will turn 50, and God is not through with me yet. Thank you, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Just a little point of information, and I want to thank the Councilman, the majority leader, for his conversation publicly, and those who have the right to come down here and voice their concerns over any issue regarding their public safety and well-being in the city of Philadelphia, especially when it comes to public safety, as well as our revenues in this school district, because the school district is extremely important to the success and the future of the city of Philadelphia. You know, just a little point of clarity, I held the bill because I do want to hear a little more from members, and look forward to those conversations. But there is a clear distinction between a capital expenditure on the city side, as well as a capital expenditure from our school district, which we do not have authorization over. And this particular bill does not authorize any capital expenditures whatsoever to build a prison, because I don't know if we are going to head in that direction or not. We are the city of Philadelphia. We could do more than one thing at a time, and I think the people elect us to do multiple things, to move our city forward and to prepare for the futures of our kids and make sure that they are safe and that the working conditions for every citizen of Philadelphia, whether incarcerated or not, are safe and that our schools are prepared for our future. So I look forward to meeting with members, look forward to meeting with stakeholders, and look forward to moving the city forward as we need to do so at another time. This bill does not authorize any of that. It just authorizes us to do our due diligence as we are responsibly able to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
On Tuesday, which obviously was election day, I had the opportunity to attend a press announcement at the Boys and Girls Club Philadelphia in Germantown, in which it was announced that there is going to be an $8 million campaign to build a new state-of-the-art facility in Germantown. And it's a new venture called the Bold Campaign, a Bold Change for Kids campaign. And not only are we raising $8 million for the facility in Germantown, but $40 million for the clubs throughout the city of Philadelphia. So I'm very appreciative and look forward to working with all the folks to make that happen. We did provide some information to all of our members, so that if there is a Boys and Girls Club in your district, or that's one that you are fond of, please let us know. I see Kurt, I see, I see. But we want to make sure that all of the clubs have the attention and support that they need, because when we talk about a pipeline to prison, when we talk about construction of prisons, this is where it begins, making sure that we have opportunities and access for all of our young people. The new club, which will be named after Comcast founder Ralph Roberts, will include an Internet Essentials Lab, an art room, a music studio, and additional recreation space. And whether they're passionate about sports or science, the new facility will captivate the minds of all of our young people and our children. And so with it, I do want to give a special thanks to David L. Cohen and Comcast, who are leading this multimillion-dollar fundraising effort. I almost said billion, but multimillion-dollar fundraising effort to bring the new and incredibly improved Germantown Boys and Girls Club to fruition. So again, when we talk about the future of our young people, this is where it starts, and we want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome.
Also, in the spirit of the Chairwoman of Parks and Recreation, last week, we also engaged in a public-private partnership with Con O'Barron of the Philadelphia Eagles to bring to South Philadelphia Smith Playground a state-of-the-art, brand-new football, baseball, and athletic field for the children of South Philadelphia. And I've always aspired to have the same type of athletic field that you have in your district, and so it's been a long time coming, but I just want to acknowledge the hard work of Con O'Barron from the Philadelphia Eagles, because this is the second project of Connor Barwin from the Philadelphia Eagles, because this is the second project where he has engaged in a public-private partnership. The first project was the Ralph Brooks Totlot. We will also be having another state-of-the-art basketball court slash urban food garden for our young people. And so again, it's about making sure that our young people have safe havens to enjoy themselves in their neighborhoods in which they live in. And so I just wanted to acknowledge Connor Barwin from the Philadelphia Eagles for stepping up to the plate and not only being an outstanding athlete, but most importantly, a dedicated public servant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. He is a truly a good, dedicated servant. He did some things up in my district, and too often here, and I know you probably saw that field right there. I know, I know. No, I just want to piggyback on that real briefly, because I'm not supposed to speak from the podium. But, you know, speaking of those individuals that have made it, they in fact, to some degree, don't get enough accolades. I know, Councilwoman and I, we share a field up and around Hunting Park, where two of our sports heroes, Ryan Howard, stepped to the plate, and we had a state-of-the-art baseball facility up there, and Michael Vick, who's no longer here, but he left his mark by having a state-of-the-art football field. And there are a lot of good people across the city that are part of our sports team. So I agree with you, Councilmen, that those folks have done some good stuff. There appears to be no additional speeches, and Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lana Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourn until Thursday, June 4, 2015, at 10 a.m.
I think it's been moved and probably second, that council stand adjourn until Thursday, June 4, 2015. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you all very much.